We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, today's date is June the sixth, twenty twenty-two, and this is the Telsis City Council Council. Everybody please stand and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, you may proceed. Alright, um, I do have one addition that is already on your all's current agenda since they added it before in print, but if you notice it is under all visits, I have the hotel tax paper and you have, uh, Joseph here to update us on that. So that's the only addition. Uh, are there any other additions to the agenda that the council would like to add or make? If there are none, our ten motions approved agenda as presented. So the motion made by Julie to hear her second.
Right after.
Second by Phillipine for the discussion. And now we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, stick a five and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda standing through. Presentation of minutes for approval. Or if you have a copy of your, um, May second, twenty twenty-two minutes in your folder, maybe restricted down on Friday the twelfth. If there are no changes to the minutes, our ten motions approved.
Only a motion or second.
Okay, Julie made a motion every second, any further discussion? All those in favor, stick a five and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes standing approved. Comments, citizens? If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, please step up to the microphone, stick your name and address of the business. Seeing none, we'll move on to committee board reports. Let's start with Board One, Mayor Clinton.
Um, yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, and we were discussing a little bit earlier, the attended the planning commission meeting on May the sixteenth, and, um, where J and K for their homes had a, um, actually two requests in front of the planning commission. One was for a subdivision approval, which the planning commission did approve that, um, subdivision development plan. The second part of that, which is actually, uh, the most important part also is, um, we did approve a zoning ordinance change for the property, which is currently, can't remember what it was on, really, uh...
I got COVID right now. Or not, I think I got COVID.
Um, yeah, I don't know, it's agriculture or R one, maybe R one. I'm not sure.
Close enough.
But anyway, we have approved, uh, the recommendation of the council, um, for the amendments to the zoning ordinance, but, uh, for some reason that is not on our, it's not like. And so I'm assuming he can't proceed with, uh, development, so that...
Well, how about a, we're at a special meeting. One, we have that.
Okay. Um, a couple other things, or, or, um, and Mayor mentioned this, uh, previously, I want to bring it up again. There was a sidewalk on Main Street and the five hundred block, um, on the east side of the street, and in front of what is now Elizabeth Renee, I believe, um, the tree that was planted during the Main Street revitalization project has popped up in the corner of the sidewalk, and it's a tree hazard. And just happen to notice that your partner prize sign was sitting right there by that tree.
It is.
By that sidewalk. I would like that sidewalk to be repaired, it is a safety hazard.
And do you want the tree hanging out too?
I don't care what you do with the tree, the sidewalk needs to be repaired.
I'm afraid decided in order to take, take the sidewalk and then have to take the tree out, because I'm afraid it's going to do it in just a few short years.
But it's a trimming, and it's, uh, it's, you know, business area, um...
Yeah, I agree with you on that. It just gotta be something that's... Oh, I added to my list. It's a long one. Oh, I have to, I promise.
Um, what's in that business again?
You used to have different medicine shops.
It used to be, um, Tim and Matt's House, yeah, yeah. And there's, there's several businesses there. The, uh, your colleague closing up, um, tell me to do some therapy, uh, the, I am concrete replaced. So it's fairly busy here, too. Um, third thing I have on my list is the, um, there was a fire in the old hospital property, uh, a few weeks ago. And I'm just wondering what status of that property is, and in my opinion, this is health and safety hazard. Uh, I understand that there was open access to that building, that there have been people going in that building allegedly, and potentially some things going on that should be going on. Plus, it reported to me that when the fire department fought that fire, it had been into that building, and that there were holes cutting into the floors, that had they not seen them in time, they could have fallen through. Uh, the holes cutting into the floors were stuff that had been removed and you could literally fall through those. So I'm just wondering what the status is of that property and what we might do if anything about getting that property, something done with it.
I can, I've got to, I care what I can say because I did meet with the individuals that hopefully it's going to take that whole property. The, the, my, my, gone. Soon, okay, hopefully. Now, soon as they're wanting to apply for an area, we're working on that stuff. So I don't want to look too many details, so this is, yeah, so hopefully.
Is that in the city?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's in the city, yes.
The county sold to the current owner that had a very reasonable price, I would say. And so, I know they've been scrapping at this point in time, I think it's time for the whole facility to come down. I think if it is individuals' plans, um, together, they will come all down at a cost.
Well, potentially, potentially it's good of property, but as it is now...
And that is part of the discussion.
It's a...
I think, I think you'll be pleased, uh, with the result.
Okay, a couple other things. Last, I'm making up last one, I don't know if it's four hours.
You've got five pages.
This is two to one. Um, and I, I would just ask, and I know the, the police department put out a notice regarding fireworks, and I've read through that notice, and I guess I've got a question for the chief or RRR attorney. The, the regulations, the dates and regulations that we have, I know the state put out some, you know, special legislation, some specific dates that you have to make available. I didn't know RRR ordinance was more flexible than the state, if we had added days to that, or if we're just going strictly by the state days.
I think the last part is it. From what I remember, we went with the strictest we could go, but what the state said we had to go.
Okay.
Does that, I haven't seen it, I don't know.
There's so many days before the fourth of July, or these holidays, and so many, like, four, five days before, four, four, five days.
Just give me some of that, I know who's...
I, I think I can really hear.
Let's see, okay. And, and I...
And I agree with you, like, I think it should be a little more, could be a little more flexible.
We had, I, I didn't call, but we had RRR works going off in our neighborhood on Memorial Day, which, number one, I think is inappropriate. Memorial Day is not a holiday in my mind to be celebrated. It's to remember our service to people who died.
Yeah.
But it is also not one of the days that the ordinance provides for, for RRR, so... And then the chief, I think that if it could also, I mean, try to defer it, so... Okay. Um, did you hear about RRR work too, Julie?
I heard.
She's got a high set on.
No, Philip. The last thing, and this isn't in my board, but, but I observed that there was a new function at the, um, First Baptist Church on, uh, Thirteenth and Jefferson Street. And I sent you a text message, I never get a reply, Mayor. But the alleyway, uh, on Jefferson Street between Thirteenth and Fourteenth is a mess. Uh, tries for, there's a sidewalk and there's a lot of, in my mind, there's a lot of dust and traffic there from churches as well as, you know, you used to go for the ball games, you'd see people walking down Jefferson Street, the football field. The alleyway entrance is south, which I think is city responsibility. It is a massive jungle bullet con, I think needs to be reworked. I think it's a hassle.
Well, we got two gentlemen that, I hope they'll... Can you guys take a look at that? This is, I know you're packing your business, we have a trash. Pick up.
Okay.
If you could, next week, you guys get together and see if that summer haba gas is going to be digging next week, you know, obviously don't replace it if they're going to dig it next week, obviously either. It may work out.
Yeah, that's not in my board, I don't know if that's Julie's or Phil's board, you know?
Nice.
Yours. Okay, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Julie, I don't...
I could probably come up with...
No, no.
I attended the planning commission, uh, last, last month, and he's already talked about that. Um, I don't know, there really isn't a full committee anymore, but since I was on it for a very long time, I did attend the river cutting, which was last Friday, and it's beautiful. It's just amazing what was there two years ago, what we have now. Everything about it, from, from one end to the other, it's, it's just amazing. And I hope people see that and I hope they use it to, to do the next, to do the last.
Saturday, we got two hundred and two people. Sunday, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Today, fourteen. But that was weather, yeah. But, so, I, I don't, somebody's pretty significant committee, is two hundred or a lot for example? I don't know. It's pretty good.
That is a lot for what...
What, what is he saying? I don't know, just curious. I don't know.
It should be that all the time, that plus, but...
It probably will take some time, too, I mean, the, the, the service of what, two years? So, I mean, people, right habits and some, some...
Sure.
Well, someone, I saw this on Facebook, that has lived here, they, I think they said twenty-four years, asked where...
Where was?
Where this...
They don't know where was.
They didn't know the address and had no idea where was that.
Where was, where was that?
Probably, yeah, people will find out and take advantage of it. That's all I have.
Alright, we'll move on to board three, oh, seven.
Yeah, yeah, the pool's great, me and my daughter went there today.
You was on the fourteen.
Uh, splash drink I like it that you have to, it has a water shut off.
Runs for three minutes.
Yeah, so you put your hand on a little sensor and it turns back on. So that's pretty neat. Um, not much else besides I went down to the fields a lot and talk to Brandon. So we talked quite a bit about everything they do down at softball fields, looks great. He told me about a few things they do to try to keep the fields open as much as they can during rainy seasons, so... That's all I got.
I think, uh, we'll move on, board four, Gary Moore.
Okay, uh, start off here, it's not on our list, but, uh, we're doing our partners in pride now, I think for the next few months. And my partner in pride is the Perry County Sheriff's Department. Kirk Malone and his, uh, says it's kind of a landscape there, it's his flowers, his plants, um, it's his background cover, the grass. So they will be the recipient in, in, in June. Part from Perry County recycling, uh, River Sweet Week, which is just a day cleaning. That was postponed in May because of high water. And this coming Saturday, uh, you're at this, it's not a park, River Sweet. Also Saturday, which have a period of activity down there, so, uh, I'm not sure that's rolling or that you're small boats.
I'm in kayaks.
Kayaks, okay. So that's, that's going to be going on this Saturday as well. Okay, we're still looking for, help for Chris, our director at the office out there. Uh, it's a part-time job, twenty-four hours weekly, and pays eleven sixty an hour. So if anybody that's like a part-time job, working in the office setting, uh, call Chris, we do, right?
Hmm?
Chris is right. Okay, um, there was some problems with the branch on site, I think, and we should be glad last month about that. Those are broken, some have been made, and I know it was happy with the changes made there, and, uh, so it was functioning quite well. So it's prices, I know the mayor almost writes these down, you can try, the market prices are stable, so let's go over that. Stable. Okay, uh, let's see what else we got.
Here, you forgot the reporter, who's the new chairman of that?
Well, that's a, a minor, uh, social thing, I think I got a point with that. Chairperson of that committee.
The chief though.
And, uh, my associate is just...
Is it Randy Cleveland?
No, Randy.
He's the vice.
Vice, okay.
You know, Chris needs an assistant, if there's no assistant, the president has to fill in for free.
Uh, I know.
Okay, good pay, huh?
She's like, like, working in Mexico.
Yeah.
Okay, going on here. B C D C had a community development need, uh, some activities coming up, their farm table. And this was all off the last couple of years because of COVID, that's back on the chair. And I guess it will be back at Perry County at four, right?
I thought it was a sitting.
But it's always been a sitting.
Well, not sure, she said we would get that, uh, before October, anyway, October one, farm table. Okay, the child park dating, which occurred a few years down town, this is very threatening, that's what I think is all that. Couple weeks coming up this fall, chili cook-off, November fifth downtown here, Saturday, November fifth. And Christmas break is scheduled for December third, first Saturday in December. Uh, child care, looking again for executive director out here at child care. And I've asked requirements for that, no training, it's turned, it's almost finished. Okay. That's, uh, a little galling, I have to make a time.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Councilman, John Little.
I had constituents out in the area of, on Tels Street, thirty-second street area out there, approaching me here about a month or so ago, concerned about traffic on thirty-second street. Thirty-second street is a blue street, and the roads are all the way to Tels Street. And suspecting a lot of people were bypassing Thirty-first Street because of stop signs and using Thirty-second Street with some speeding, you know, variations. So I asked the police department if they could do a study out there, and they put their sign out there and everything set up, and ran it for two weeks with everything turned on, you know, when you drive past, it goes now fast, you run around, all that stuff, and all that. And they did that for two weeks, and they turned around and did it for two weeks without that, okay? And basically the gist of it is, is pretty high traffic levels in that area, more than what I was expecting. Had a day there averaging almost a hundred sixty cars a day, and over this period from the, uh, sixteenth of May to the sixth of June, we had thirty-four hundred seventy cars come down that street. Uh, we had a minimum speed of ten miles per hour, maximum speed, and this is the way out there, seventy-one miles per hour. But we did have a lot of speeds that were in the higher thirties, forties, things like that. And anyway, uh, like I said, that constituent was concerned, he had to walk into school and all this stuff, and so he was asking for stop signs, so I was reasoning behind the study, and, uh, since she came with, with this information, and I had said to the four public courts that I would like to see us put a stop sign in that, three-way stop sign on, uh, Thirty-second and Fourteenth Streets. Because one street coming, one way coming on to Thirty-second Street is just basically a one-lane gravel alley-like that goes up in there, I think some of ours are built up there or something like that, it's not used. But anyway, I talked to Mayor about it, and we had to do an ordinance, but I would like to make a motion that we get this ordinance prepared to install this three-way stop sign at the corner of Second and Fourteenth Street.
Why are thirty?
Thirty, Thirty-second, Thirty-second and Fourteenth, yes.
So that's right by Park?
There's a block up from that, yeah.
East, or...
Yeah.
We can't adopt or retire, so I don't have any, so then she got inside, so we can add a special meeting that they're going to have to talk about how to do the taxes. I think we can have that, add at that meeting for consideration, adoption, whatever that, that does. Do you want them, I don't really need them, no, we're really emotional, just...
The ordinance, we have the ordinance basically, all that. I was just wanting to inform everybody of what will go on and everything like that, or...
I'll make a note, to have Roger or our office will email the council a copy of the traffic report to see if you have that information. That's, that's okay, I appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, city attorney, community meeting, and not other than the pressure of the first definitely. Today, taking minutes, are there any comments or anything from the prepared office that you need? Alright, the only thing I have, uh, is Mayor, my partners in pride, uh, this month will be KC electric, KC supply. I think they're branding the river cutting is the thirteen, what I remember reading on Facebook with this month. For those who do not know where that's at, uh, remember where Periphery Way used to be for many years, and that they were down there on Main Street. Uh, Casey Gold family, that's winter, and really made that place look nice. Uh, they're gonna be selling electrical supplies there, plumbing, uh, two-by-four plywood, uh, tools that look like based on what I saw on Facebook posts, as well as their, uh, their solar business. That's been very successful, and they're installing solar fields all across the country. So, thank you for your investment, so that's my pick. I did report the last month's meeting, which, um, just might have put the minutes, Elizabeth Renee's was my May partner in pride. I forgot to bring that up. That's all I have for that part there, so we'll move down to old business, Seventh Street, departments and tax payment. We have Ron's commitment here, uh, to update us on the status of things on that, so Ron, it's all yours, sir.
I know how people, they get up here and always ask for something, so I'm not going to ask them for a little bit. Uh, I'll be asking for a tax payment, and we've discussed it with the mayor, it's, well, they proposed thirty-six unit apartment complex down there. Uh, and in order for me to, the redevelopment commission is, I have an agreement to buy that piece of property from, and matter of fact, we've already deposited funds to pay for it, but they can't transfer those, that deed until we have the tax payment approved. So, uh, and my financing is now down to the point we have to have a purchase agreement. And that purchase agreement would have to be between the redevelopment commission and my LLC. Uh, in order for that, for them to transfer that property to, to our LLC, I will, uh, before they can transfer the actual name, we have to have the tax payment approved. Uh, I have the paperwork here for that tax payment. Um, basically it's for ten years, it'd be ten percent a year for ten years. Uh, but there are a couple things I need to make sure that we have in that property that deals directly with the town, and that's that, uh... There's going to be some sidewalks and curbs that are going to have to be put in on city property, and I'd like to propose that we did it at that time and you can reimburse us for those, since we're going to be there pouring concrete. Uh, also, I need a water line extended between a fire hydrant on the west end down to, or towards the firehouse, the fire, the firehouse to have enough water pressure to provide fire protection, and, um, to make sure we got enough pressure there to provide fire protection for that building right there. Um, and I'm assuming since that property had water and sewer on it, we will, whether there will be no water taps and sewer taps for that piece of property. So, and we intend to start as soon as we can, uh, the plans will be done probably by the end of the, middle of the week, and as soon as we get the purchase agreement in hand, we will sub, uh, apply for a, a foundation release. Uh, but in the meantime, there's some things that we can do, we do have a water, a sewer line that runs across that property, right through the middle of the property. It's a sewer tap, that's a service for medical building down there, and it's going to have to be rerouted to go around the property. And that wasn't explained to me until after we did this, but those are, um, but the property is, uh, should us, should have. Well, I can't say exactly, but it should, a price close to four million dollars. So we will, I do have the paperwork here for that, um, so, but I need to get this approved before we can finish up the, uh, the purchase agreement between redevelopment and our LLC.
What, what has happened, and Connie's out here and she's an expert, she's really good at explaining, this is better than I would be. Um, can you see the, the...
Did we have that?
The what?
Do we have that?
SP one?
No, you didn't have that.
This is the SP one, so you've got this thing out here, so I will, what happens, I give this to Jeff, city attorney.
Right.
And the city attorney does the public notices and then stuff like that, so, um, this is all I need for Jeff to, and then you guys will then vote on it. I want to, you can vote on this tonight. So you'll, you'll copy to this prior.
Is there any chance that'd be available by the time you have your next special meeting? Or is there enough time in the public?
The advertising with the papers deadlines and stuff, that's, I can't promise, I'm going to tell you something and it'll be wrong.
That's what I, yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know, the deadlines are like, are like nine AMs, I don't think I can get that there, then.
Yeah, I understand.
But if it is all possible, we could, we could do it, if not, it has to be at our July fifth meeting. It's on a Tuesday then.
Well, because I really, my options, I can't start anything.
Sure.
And then I think about it is, my letter of commitment with the bank is only good for so many, at the interest rate that I got right now.
I will, I will give our attorney first thing in the morning, and then I'll...
I know that's kind of a hard thing to do, but it's hard to get a commitment for anything, I can't get a commitment for a product on a thing for more than a day that you talk to them about it. You get a price on something that says it's good for the day only.
Sure.
When is a special meeting, when we at the water board?
Yeah. It's due June twentieth.
But it depends on whether you can get it advertised or not, I understand that part, so...
I think there's a good chance we can do it. I, I've got some other questions, sir.
Sure.
Um, I, if I understood you, you're going to put in sidewalks?
There's just a little bit of sidewalk on, I think it's on Humboldt or right there. We have to put some entryways in, of course, that's our part, but there are some parts that has to be, to be repaired there, and, uh, and then on Seventh Street, there's the, there'll be an entrance on Seventh Street and entrance on Humboldt both.
Are there, you planning anybody's sidewalks along South Street, you mean Humboldt?
I don't think we have to, according to what I was told, we don't have to put them down Humboldt, we do down Seventh Street. But that's all town property.
And you're going to expect the city to reimburse you for that?
It's on your property, I can't...
Well, legally, technically, the homeowner's responsibility, but it's part of our negotiations, kind of an incentive, see, the redevelopment commission is selling this property to Ron, so the money that they get, the county's going to give to us, so we're going to use that money.
So we're the commission that's making this commitment?
You know, the sidewalks wise, we are, but they're going to give us the money, basically in the sell of the property, that we're going to use to fix the sidewalks in. So the money will be there to do it, I'm saying, should be. I don't know the exact number of costs, but...
It won't be that, and it won't be what that, that number there, no.
No.
And the fire?
Water line is, and this, now, I'm, I'm, this is kind of coming secondhand from the water department, they said they needed to, because one line that doesn't have much pressure, they need to tie those two together, to loop those together down Humboldt or Seventh Street to make... To loop those together down Humboldt or Seventh Street to make, in order for us to have proper fire protection in that building, we have to have, I gotta have a certain amount of, you know, that they, they don't think they had enough pressure to do what I needed to do.
That's our cause also. Probably, I guess, I, you probably should be, I mean, we, we need to offer some incentives if we wanna see apartments and housing, if you got a spirit, we want that.
Is there sewer taps as well?
Yeah.
Sewer taps as well?
Five dollars, that was mine actually.
Yeah.
I was told that it came with the property, because it had original sewer taps on the building that were turned, torn down.
It wouldn't be that big a deal to get this, because I'm sorry, now we've got ten families moving into Tel City with lock, we have no work on that. So, we could, we could wait around and hope that happens, or we can, you know, make it happen.
So, do you pay three percent on your assessed value eventually on property taxes? I think that's what I.
I think I do, for commercial, or for reference.
Yeah, I don't know about commercial, two or three.
Yes, I think that's what we figured.
Yeah.
It's two hundred and, it was two hundred and something thousand, something like, I don't remember what it was, I had it on a spreadsheet that I have in front of me.
So the net money, I guess, after slowly over ten years, it'll start flowing back into the TIF to help develop the rest downtown. So that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
For probably twenty-five years or something, but it's good.
But I think it's important we have some incentives to, you know, get this, this property that's set there for how many years, interesting.
Well, it would be best if the city has had down there, we purchased all the land, purchased the whole Tel City chair property. We purchased, we paid to tear it all down, and then we established a revitalization area, so, I think.
It's, it's important. I mean, sidewalks, we're gonna get, what do you think, fifty thousand or fifty?
Fifty-two, fifty-three thousand, so I guess what we're.
There'll be a small amount that comes off top frames and stuff, at the end of it, the city should get close to forty, forty-five thousand from the redevelopment commission. And we need that money for sidewalk repair, we need to pay that tax if we want for ourselves. We could. And then, you know, we obviously want some street lights, we want us to be near.
Well, and I, I can't say that you guys, they've been, the electric company's been really good, they're incentivizing for me to use total electric. So, and, and I will say right now that I'd say, a lot of the bigger subs are gonna come, the mechanical people are pretty much all gonna come out of Tel City, it looks like. They're within my range on stuff right now, Josh, Casebolt, and Fredericks, and R. So, and all the appliances are coming from Fishers, of course, I buy all my stuff from them anyway, but they're, they're, you know, a lot of that stuff's gonna come here, so. I, I'm a firm believer, if, you know, since I've built about twenty houses in Tel City in the last few years, most, a lot of my subs come from here, so.
You might not have talked to Casey's supply now, so.
No, no, he's, he's already hit me up. I went down to talk to him.
Councilor, any other questions for Ron? How many of your units are gonna be ending down?
Well, here, here's something, we have to put in, one in each building, but you gotta understand, since this is all gonna be on one floor, all of them are gonna be outside of, all of them on the first floor, outside of having, not having like the sink and the dishwasher where you have to buy the high dollar stuff. All of them will be, you can use a wheelchair in all of them, the bathrooms are all gonna be, you can get a wheelchair in all, all, all the units, all of them, on the first floor.
I think that's a nice plus.
Because we, we designed the bathrooms the same way, they won't, most of them will have tub showers, but they will have, you could actually have a, you all have the five foot in front of the commode and everything to fit in those other units, all of them on the first floor will fit it. Matter of fact, all of them will fit it, just can't get up the stairs in the other units. So there'll be twelve units that are actually, there's two by law, and then there'll be another ten that would, they could, you know, you could get wheelchairs in and out of them very easily. There will be no steps or ADA thresholds and everything else getting in and out.
Councilor, any other questions for Ron? Ron, I'll give it to the City Attorney first thing in the morning, and find out what we need to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, the Dennis Hotel Tax Pay, we have Mr. Joseph Gwynn here, kinda give us a little bit of update on some of that, kind of the same thing. And in this form, we may be able to turn our Noel in at the same time, and you get a Noel. Is he better?
I've got two different forms, that you and Alvin sent me previously. One of them is a follow-up to the original SB one, this is an SB one personal property, that I'm gonna submit, but as I mentioned earlier to you, there is some bit of confusion on my part in regards to our FFNE and OSE, furnitures, furnitures, fixtures and equipment. And, in going into this, because the categories on this form of this manufacturing equipment, R and D equipment, logistics, distribution equipment, and IT equipment, none of them fit the category.
Do you know how that comes?
These are assigned copies, Chris and Alvin have emailed copies. What I would say is this, is that, you know, I know we've discussed the terms of the abatement period and so forth, but one of the things that I, that I wanted a little bit of clarification from, once Carol, the lady that knows everything.
Connie?
Connie, and she does know everything, whenever I've spoken to her. We have to refit these according to Hills and Standards every few years, and it is, please don't publish it, it is a Hampton Inn, so, it's not for, until you see the shovel in the ground, I can't officially announce it, even if this is a public forum. But, you know, we have to refit, we have to retrofit these, these hotels every few years, and it's well within the, in the period that we've discussed, two and a half times, that they have to be retrofitted with various things, so that means that the valuation of this personal property is a moving target. So, that's why I'd like to have some real clarification in regards to personal property inside of a hotel, because that just doesn't seem, since it doesn't fit any of these categories, it doesn't seem to be a legitimate request.
What I would request is go ahead and turn in your SB one and one on actual real estate, get that down.
That was already done. This, this, well, this is not an SB one, this is, this is a state fifty, you know, state form fifty-one seventy-six seven, R seven slash one twenty-one. So, I mean, this, what this actually asks for is a number of employees, because it's its current number, number retained, and number additional. Since we haven't hired anybody officially yet, I put in the retain, I put three with, with a high level, high end on the salary mark, and about twelve to fourteen additional, and I put twelve in there for part timers. And in one of the section four, it says estimated total cost and value of proposed project, I put down our bid price, which was well in excess intentionally of your appraised price. In fact, it was double, one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred, plus estimated value of proposed project, and this is straight from our financial models, and that's eight point, that's eight million eight hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Not, there's no, less any value on the property being replaced, and so we probably will bone this a little bit, because until, until we get the final, we don't, you know, until we get it from our architect, and then eventually, at the end of it, so it's, the estimated value upon completion of projects by twelve man. So.
That's fixtures, building, everything.
That's doors open. But like I said, on the personal property, I'm a little concerned about how this is applied in, in regards to, since we're including it already in the total value on this one here, and I'm segregating it on SB one, which I, you know, on this personal property addendum to it. You know, it's, it's, I'd like more clarification from your experts and whoever from the state has that answer, they can contact us, our attorney, whoever it may be, but.
I would defer to Connie, because my understanding that, that you would simply apply for a new abatement on a major equipment. Instead of equipping all in the initial. Because I know that's why the ATCC does, whenever they buy new equipment, they file new requests or they've got about fifteen.
He gets asked for the big one, the fixtures for three years, and then he's got to do it every year, turn another one in every three years.
But their equipment, ATCC's equipment, I'm sure, is being used in part of the manufacturing process, ours is depreciating the minute we put it in the hotel. So, I mean, it's, it's completely different animal, it doesn't fit any of those categories on there.
I'll try to show you tomorrow, or email to you from another industry street, I don't have that many.
Well, like I said, just, just contact the state, ask them what they do for some of the larger companies in Evansville and Indianapolis, for, you know, for the hotel companies they have there, just some kind of guidance.
Make sure it's the right classification.
Right. You know, like everybody else, I hate paying accountants and attorneys any damn more than I already do, so. And so that, you know, that, like I said, it's a moving target at this point with that. But, beyond that, let me please turn in these forms, are there any questions?
Councilor, any questions? Thank you for bringing in.
We, I assume this, you know, upon completion of this, we can start working towards closing on the property and, and moving towards seeing what the shovel looks like when it hits the dirt.
Sounds great.
Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Councilor.
Thank you. That's the form right there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks both you guys for investing.
Is there a step up to you, Neil? Is Ron for the red resolution?
I think it's one percent, right?
Yeah. Alright, that's everything under new business, so we're, our city's old business, we're moving down to new business, additional appropriations. Should have those, this is behind your agenda there. Additional appropriations, red resolution, twenty twenty-two dash nine, do you have any ready to get this? Red resolution, okay. Whereas determined that is now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, section one, you're getting by the city, the city can any of that, for the expenses of the tax community for the bond interest some of the money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. Say general fund requested, full budget training, two thousand dollars. I'm not gonna read that actual count, so don't be mistaken. Utilities, fifty thousand. Repairers, building, full equipment, forty-five thousand. And additional equipment, ten thousand, for a total of one hundred and seven thousand dollars. Any questions regarding this adopted six day, June twenty twenty-two? That's coming from, they're not allowed through the pool, right? But I know they're going to be created. Correct. And on the back, I signed, I just. There are no questions, resolution part one, one reading.
Like a short list, what's the sum of that?
Training, training parts, utilities, water, electric, da-da-da-da-da, repair, building equipment, that's concrete work, that's, that's, that's the floor. Part of the flooring, there's the firehouse, etc., kind of that thing, in general. Trying to come up top of my head, yeah. Connie's got them right, yeah, I'm not so sure of it. What?
Relocating about, sleeping.
There you go, yeah, yeah, that's, right now, sorry, no, you got it. Relocating about, that was leaving there?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
Okay. Oh, okay.
A D A X, that's back there.
Here's your, the breakdown more, so. Training and stuff, like beer corporations started at the pool, that was around twelve hundred dollars. Don machine shop, diamond carriers, additional light switches for the receiver and lights, floor, legally repair Arnold, visa, that's about. A D A parking and water pipes, so a few of those additional A D A parking, and what we can, our pool, common stuff, there's that. Arnold, there was additional painting and so forth, and then replacing the windows and the road, equipment, there's parts that's in the exterior, radiator and the pervert. So, I got my sense, right? Does that tell any questions? If there are no questions, I have a term motion to approve. Motion made by John here, second. Second by Gary. All in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, no, chair. Do you want to pass this around and sign in the right column? Not the, the right, the right, right column. Sign in the wrong column. There you go. Got it? Alright. Moving on, tax abatement. You should have, there's, there's things all together, there's two to consider, one was John Chair, and then for River Point. Each of us basically. Anytime I have that on the record, I figure it right. Anyways, they're all together, any questions on those, John Chair, got everything printed, then you should. And River Point, that is only on the retail space that is currently being occupied, which is currently occupied by the artists, artists, I can't read the key. It's not on any other part of the building except for that space. Yeah, it's.
What year is this?
There's, well, they don't have, I mean, I said they have a long time left, they don't really, because twenty sixteen is when it started, I think. Is that right? Yeah. I know that's, I'm sorry. The, the artists, River Point, twenty fifteen. Twenty fifteen.
Maybe they'll have more of their retail space with the additions coming down.
Connie, some of those are on all of those last.
Ten years.
Yeah, well, but first, that's a misconception on granting tax abatement, you don't automatically grant a ten year tax abatement, you can go up to ten years.
Or actually go over for ten years now, they did that change. I think there's four, ten years. But, hmm? But like, on only twenty twenty-two, fifty, twenty fifteen.
I think I saw, I'm sure it's five or so, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, it does, it's on this last form on here, on this state date. And there's five, there's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight. It's on that, the back eight H, very, very back eight H, River Point, second, back eight H on John Chair. See, I think why River Point seems a little different, it's because it started when the work started on that part of the building. So, it's not built, oh, but with artists, they don't open, until then. I'm never gonna do something like that. John Chair's a little more, a little more easier to.
Yeah, I have, I have some, I have some, um, River Point.
Like, I tell you, what we can do, yeah, what we can do, if the council's okay with it, and vote on each one, by itself, and vote together. And then you've got the attorney, you just vote later, either one. Totally. Is that okay?
I, it doesn't matter, I'm gonna vote for all of them, this is my expression, River Point, they estimate forty-seven employees, and they show zero. I, it doesn't matter, I'm gonna vote approval, I'll vote them, this is my special one, I'm, I'm River Point, they estimate forty-seven employees, and then they show zero. But what makes, I think.
Gary, I don't care, I mean, they show, they, when they got, when they ran into tax, they based that on forty-seven new employees. And currently, after seven years of operation, they're still showing zero employees.
I'd like to say that, I don't, I didn't know what the report said, definitely turned it, if we all know there are some people that didn't work there, their report, really, really not accurate.
You mentioned retail, they're, they're, I, I heard by the, they're going, turn that area down, lower floor, they're doing this, and they're part markets as well.
Oh, really?
They give it up, they, 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 they.
I think that's actually on the, I think that's, yeah.
Next, they have, they have, yeah. They're just, we, we are bars, is this, is this?
Absolutely.
It is, and they received five hundred thousand rather than two thousand. Not, not this, not this thing.
Okay.
This is, that's why.
I guess, River Point, they applied for their deduction, go up to one point five million, they're only using, I think, on the front, they're going to pick one thousand? Two sixty-one? Cause they only filled up one spot.
That's a great one. So, I tell you what, we're just gonna do one at a time, it's easier, this is, maybe for the minute purposes, maybe if you talk about it, or talk about anything, so, uh, start off with John Cheers, uh, all right, if there's no questions, I intend a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Phil here, second.
Also seconded.
Seconded by Gary, any further discussion? And now, if you call for a vote, all in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll consider River Point, LLC, uh, there are no other questions, I intend a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Gary here, second. Seconded by Phil, any further discussion? You're none, you'll call for a vote, all in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, all right, thank you. Approval of A R P funding requests in the committee? Got my stuff. I don't have stuff there, you're seeing, just set. All right, you all should have a form that looks like this, it's got A R P, A R P funding, uh, request in City of Tull City, uh, you'll see in here, these are favorable recommendations from A R P committee for these plans. Start our first, ten thousand dollars for updated city website, we just outbid it up to that, doesn't mean they're gonna spend all that, they can, but up to that. Fifty thousand dollars for purchase of the server switches, antivirus, uh, software, router, over the next several years. Uh, as Connie expressed, that our I T and island and engine has said our server is on its last leg. They're expensive, I've never bought a server for my life, but they're expensive, I guess, and switches, and it's not just like more, I think it's something better than antivirus software, we don't even have, you know, routers and so forth, so, fifty thousand dollars. Hundred twenty thousand dollars for purchase of the twenty, twenty-three Ford trash truck, which is still being built at this point, I don't even know if it started building or whatever, but. Twenty thousand dollars for purchase of the Tull City water, the ground, hand-made radar unit, I believe, brought that up. Twenty-five thousand dollars to J F people, and this is in addition to what we just appropriated, this twenty-five thousand can go towards moving a, uh, shelter that's been donated to the city, Sonic, you know, that arched way, steel frame structure, guys donating that to the city, we're gonna re-disassemble it, huh? Well, it's, it's where they set it, after, it's arched, you'll drive up, you'll see, you can't miss it, it's arched, there's only one big arch thing out front. Uh, it can be disassembled, reassembled with a pool, to allow shade, so, rather large structure lasts a long time, you know, that's all those. No, not the, not the, not even car park, this is literally up front of the building. That's part of it, and there's other expenses in there as well, with J F people, this is different things, but, but, this is spent over the next three years or something like that. Fifteen thousand dollars for the city hall improvements, and this is main main work downstairs bathrooms, the A D A part of them, uh, you have a limit downstairs bathrooms in the ground level. They need it, they need it, and, they should be A D A, that's our A D A entrance to the building down there, a lot of people, car shows, and other things. We need to take those bathrooms, first, I think they both, you may make a unit set bathroom, maybe change areas in there, that's, they're, they're, no, haven't got that, anyone ever seen for a break? No, this is here in the city hall, this building.
City hall.
Yeah, downstairs, or the door you come in, those bathrooms, the doors aren't even A D A, you know, as far as going in them, so they'll need to be wired. Fifty thousand dollars for the basketball court at High Iron Park, this is the basketball court there next to the tennis courts. Uh, I had numerous, five kids, young adults, come to me saying how terrible that court is, it is cracked, unbelievable, and their quips, their ankles, it's become a liability. And you go out there, kids use it, it, I mean, there's only twenty, thirty kids out there every time, almost every night.
Can we repay your legacy?
It will be, um, I did get a call from J F drop to, uh, around twelve thousand dollars to resurface it, basically, over existing. I put in a little extra to do the striping, obviously, hey, they wanna have the stripes, so, um, that's for that. Thirty thousand dollars for windy creek improvements, Pat, Chris, tested this, there are improvements we need on windy creek, um, up there near, behind the Best Buggy Inn, right there, Fifth and Bank, we're having a slide there. And also out, behind the best way to start, there's two main areas, we've identified that need, need repair, we don't know what we're gonna get, but we need to find some time, we need to start our process. So, there, and twenty-five thousand dollars for Joe Shaker Park, uh, it needs one improvement with that castle park playground, if you haven't been out there lately, it, it's, that equipment's twenty-five years old.
Oh, he's gonna repair it, carry it out, we don't want to do that.
No, and it needs work, and, and only people here for your last meeting, they're gonna be working the bats, and so forth, so, we're gonna try to improve it for a grand total of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. We have to make a break, we'll talk later, all these expenses under that, so, there's no issues as far as having to pay it back, it's a council amount, uh, if they want to approve it, I do have an ordinance here that I have to present to you for, it's an amendment to the original ordinance to be adopted, uh, but dealt with our funds, and so. Any questions on any of these expenditures or expenses that we like to do?
Go ahead, okay. The ground, uh, not here. Radar unit.
Is that a, that's a spawn of your water lines, that have not been?
That's great.
Located.
Located.
And it can also be insured, and other stuff, it can't, not just water, it can be shared, even if it needs to be.
That would pay for itself.
Yeah, it'll help.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Are you ready for a question?
I don't have any question about the, I think these are all, just I want to, I, I was, the city, I'm moving on, uh, spending of A R P funds. Um, I think they have a question on the whole A R P process, how do we, how do we, like, I guess, how do these get before the committee? And how can we get other audits before the committee, or do you have to take them before the committee? And let me, let me just throw out a big proposal, okay? And then you tell me how we should roll. I would like the city, uh, all non-elected city employees pay an incentive for working during the COVID crisis. A one-time payment on their salary, anywhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars per employee, regardless of whether it's full-time or part-time. How do I get that out on the agenda?
Process. If we have our meeting on St. Emily, uh, you can, remember, I can bring it up.
Are you on the committee, John?
I am, but I'm not in town or the week anymore at all, so.
Can, why do I have to go to another committee meeting?
You don't have to, I could do it for you if you'd like to.
Why do you have to use, who's on the committee?
Connie Berger? Myself, John.